Hi folks, for those that don't know, I'm Tom Walker. I'm chairman of the board of ed. This is my favorite time in the year. I have to stand up and dial every dollar. Well, those who are comfortable with this, I think everybody's got a copy of the packet. There's a copy of the PowerPoint I'll go through. Unfortunately, I will say, if you do have a copy of the PowerPoint, it is not 100% accurate because we met this morning by the subcommittee of the board. They outlined some more than we need to know. So it's about 100% accurate. And this is probably the most important one. The significant increases and decreases. So every year, we typically start our budget process somewhere around September when we come back from our summer break. We start looking at the bottom of fiscal year. This calendar comes up very quickly on us. So this year, at our board meeting in January, we administrated and presented a plan to the Board of Education for a total budget of 16.100 stocks. This does represent an increase over this current fiscal year's budget. And then basically maintaining all of the programs that we have today with the request to add in computer technician. We have a technology coordinator, but we also, the administration also wants to add the education. Included in this year's budget, so in 2011-2012's budget, was some stimulus money. It's called the Education Jobs Fund. It's about $350,000, $360,000. And if folks remember correctly, this is funding that Congress approved and the President signed off on to either stabilize or save jobs from unemployment. So it wasn't a money grab to go off acquisitions. It was more of the stabilization of cost. That money expires this year. So if you think about it, it reflects what we already carried out, that's 350,000 in the whole. And then on December 6th, the Board of Finance here in town strongly suggested, as you can see there, that resources are extremely limited. Please take into, make that into account when you're looking at your budget requests. As a taxpayer and as a private citizen, not as the chairman of the board of ed, I interpret that as kind of as close to zero increase as humanly possible. When things are thrown extremely limited, I would be for a couple of standing up asking for a couple hundred thousand dollars. Do you have any? The initial request came in for 2.44% over this fiscal year's spend. Finance Subcommittee sent it forward. We know that's done. We've got to think of alternative ways to maybe not get to 100% net neutral, but as close as we can. So let's look at things differently. I will tell you that we have met probably seven times in the last six weeks. Sometimes early in the morning, sometimes late at night, to really try and pull it together. Now, I think there's different ways to do it. And this is where I'll direct your attention to the significant increases and decreases. So we've got some significant increases. One of the things that I absolutely have to say upfront is we went into negotiations with our teachers union this year. And hats off to them. They agreed to a hard freeze. So, you know, a very good line item, no expectation for folks in the past. Why aren't we all in this together? And this year, we are all in this together. There, as you'll see, there are certified salaries. There are a couple of people that are jumping lanes. That's if you're not familiar with how Connecticut ranks the teachers. There are three lanes, four-year degree, masters, and then six years. So for those folks that actually achieved something that we want to be very proud of and moving their sprint lanes, we felt this award is important to how well that costs. But there's no general wage increase. There's no step increase because there's multiple steps inside of each of those lanes. Everybody basically stays where they are unless you're swapping lanes. That's a significant savings for the town this year. In addition to that, you know, there's a non-certified staff that also includes, we can hear that mission, we'll probably go back to that. Benefits, I heard the academy, they're budgeting, as you said, Joe, 5% increase in your healthcare. We're looking at about 6.65. The reason why ours is a little higher, and this is my summation, purely my speculation is, the last couple of years, we've been under 3%. So this is almost a little bit of a catch-up there for our health insurance costs. If you're in the grid, by the second, like I understand, it costs no reason to make it 22%. So even 6.5 isn't horrible. Bad that it adds $85,000 of cost to our budget, but from a perspective of what it could be. And it is. We're all paying in the palm. Now, unfortunately, love, hate, and what's not, is the second largest landmass. Town lies in the state of Connecticut, with 67 square miles. When diesel goes from $2.80 down to $3.45, I think that's a little easier to do with the budget for. Just costs more to run the buses. There's no two ways about. Also in that line item is heating fuel. I remember last time I paid another $3 for one. These are just costs that, you know, you have no matter what. Electricity, as much as we love CLMP, you always need to find a way to get along with that, everybody, if we need to. So our costs are on the line, so. These are things that you're not, that you're also seeing at home. So they shouldn't be shocky or controversial. And then we do add two buses this year. We do maintain our fleet. Every couple of years, we go out and do an R and D to say, what would it take if we were to sell our buses and have somebody, a third-party company, manage that for us? They hire employees, they bus our kids. At the end of the day, it's really a net, net neutral, whether we do it or we outsource it. The downside to outsourcing it is, once the initial three-year contract is out, and we no longer have a fleet, and no longer have employees, where diversity of income costs increase they want to put through. Hopefully, we pick a reputable company. If we went that route, unable to do that. But there's always that concern. Whereas if we maintain the fleet ourselves, we have a little bit more control. So about six, seven years ago, Frank, we talked to the Board of Finance, this was one before I was on board, and agreed that with the size population we have and the mileage that these buses drive, it would be prudent to buy two every year. And what we've moved to is, instead of just swallowing the whole $90,000 bus, buying two or $180,000 every year, is we've moved to a lease-to-own option. It's not like when you lease your car, after two years, you give the keys back, like we do. We're basically financing the purchase of buses. So we've done that the last couple of years. In this operating year, we acquired two. I think we're on the first payment on two, or the second payment on two. So the idea is, you know, every year, we'll just keep flipping, rolling forward. So that our fleet does maintain some sort of semblance of, I don't want to say safety because, you know, there are very strict requirements for keeping buses on the road, but some sort of newness. I think we figured it out at one of our committee meetings. If we stay on the two-bus lease-to-own option every year, it would take 10 years to flip our entire fleet. So the oldest bus would always only be 10 years. And here we take off from that, the oldest bus then becomes 11. We did next year, 12, 13. Now you're talking about buses for 300,000 miles, it's costing us more maintaining it with the line. Trust me, folks. We had them in for two finance committee meetings, grilled them, came back, made sure that we're making our routes optimized as much as we can, make sure that we're not overcrowding buses or overutilizing buses, make sure that we're doing the right making to the right time. We crawl through and feel very confident that this is what we need today. Dees and fees, the one thing that I would advocate for is $3,500, $30,000 for K. That is a tremendous resource for the Board of Education. There is a fee, it's a Connecticut association, it's a Board of Education. We rely on, rely on the end for our policy help, certain kind of likes. And then transportation, as we talked, which is only going up. So those are the significant increases. We do have some significant increases, as you see on your sheet. Part of that is, as Mr. Campbell pointed out, approximately $125,000 from the academy. We also got some other tuition costs, COVID and ACT, it's going to fall down to middle, college, high school. As far as I don't know, the founder of campus, they bought two DCCs. So alternative high schools for kids. So, you know, everybody understands that we're all in this together, which is very refreshing. And we've got some special introductions as well. But with all those puts and takes, we still don't get a really good today. And one of the things, one of the things that we are very, very cognizant of, our class level. It was a little hard to see, but this is elementary school. And with all the puts and takes that I'll go through, this is the worst-case scenario. There's no classroom, with the exception of grade four, that's over 20 kids. And grade four is actually 20, 28. So there'll be two sections of 20 and one section of 21.
Is this projected next year?
Yes.
There's 27 in grade right now.
There's four sessions.
Oh, okay.
We would be five.
You're changing, I'm sorry, I can't see it, there are no more handouts.
Okay, so I'll just run through it right here.
Thank you.
Pre-K, we're expecting 12, 13-year-old, 29 kids. So that would be two sessions and 14 and 1/2 kids a session. Kindergarten, we're projecting eight, four sessions, 20 kids per class. Grade one, 73, four sessions, 18 and a fourth. So again, some 11, some 12. Grade two, we're projecting 98, five sessions, 19.6. Grade three, 96. So this would be your grade two this year, grade three next year. Five sessions, approximately 19 kids a class. And then grade four, we would consider a public class, 104, five sessions. That gets you 20, 28, or some 11, 21, some 11, 21.
So just to clarify, you're keeping the same staff and just moving the class?
Well, I'll actually get to that in a minute.
Sorry.
This should value to throw it in the deck. But again, we were literally writing on the table.
No, I'm really excited about this.
Well, it's getting even better.
Sorry.
So then, public to middle school, again, worst-case scenario. Okay, so keep that in back of your mind because we're going to show you some alternative ways to get there. Grade five, we're projecting 101 kids. 25 and 4. Too high in fifth grade. Combined. But in historical purposes, anybody who can 20, 25 kids, 25 is getting a little off there, but 20 to 25 kids, is it okay? No?
Just so you know, those same kids that are in grade right now are in class of 27.
Right, because we only have, we only have four sat ads.
I know, they need you.
Sorry.
Mr. Parker, can you say projected, can you talk about higher projections? Is it based on current numbers or is there some leeway there for potentially adding?
Well, we typically have, historically, our puts and takes, as you recall, is plus or minus one student. So, you know, we lose three, but game two, we lose four, but game five, type thing. So we don't have wild swings, traditional.
And this is projected based on the staff we have right now with the number of kids we?
Well, we're going to, we're going to talk about some changes we're going to make. But with this, it's happening all this. So, grade six, 97 kids, four sessions, 20, 24. Grade seven, 110, our whole of the year at this school, five sessions, 22. And then grade eight, maybe three, five sessions, and 16.6. When you get up into six and seven, it gets a little more complicated because you've got kids moving around and, you know, they don't have a traditional teacher that you wouldn't like to sacrifice. Or if you have, this is Zoraki, you have her all day. If you're moving classes, you'd better match, things like that. So it's a little bit harder to pull, but these are hopeful numbers. So having said that, we'd be looking at a per student rate at the academy of 11,690, which you've got earlier this morning from Mr. Campbell. And you see the decrease in the number of students, 1.95% increase. So if we add up all the increases, the significant increases we talked about a few months ago, approximately $270,000. When you've got your student that decreases, reduction in actual spending down, reduction of special ed costs, things like that, gets us to a net increase of 15,269. Not bad, right? Problem is, we need to add back in the Education Jobs Fund because that federal money goes away, but we've got to replace that in budget time. So now we're looking at really an increase of 330,000. Then a lot. So how do we do it? Two buses. What I'm asking, or what the board is asking, that's part of the board, is that this is excluded from our budget. So whatever the Board of Finance approves for us, add in the cost of the two buses. So now I don't need to find that out of my operation budget. Add in $87,511 for West Stock Academy. Now, you heard both myself and Mr. Campbell said, we're going to pay the academy $125,000 less in the next fiscal year, right? However, they're asking for a 1.95% increase. We're trying to get to a 0% net cost to the town. Well, I can't fund this out of my operating budget for that, P.S. Because what, if I had to, what this means is that's $87,000 less dollars pre-K through A gets to spend, that we spend there. So why do that as a pass-through cost directly to the town? It's a cost that our supplier for high school services is requesting. We're being held indifferent by interest standards. That's fine. But the kids pre-K through A shouldn't be held accountable for that. If we're all in this together at zero, I would, instead of writing a check for $125,000 less, I'd write a check for $215,000 less. So don't take it out of the pre-K through A. So now, I need to identify, or just wait. Need to identify approximately $186,000 of net deductions to get to there. We've got, those of you that have packets, and we'll go through the things, the details here this morning. But we've identified, and this goes on for a couple of pages, things like NSDN. This is an organization that West Stock Public Schools currently belongs to for the Board of Education purposes. We're going to get rid of it. We're not going to do it. We're not going to buy, just picking out a couple of things on the list here. We're not going to buy a SCAD more, you know, or magics for their life. So the grass doesn't get a bag this year. Be nice and good, but I'd rather have an educator in a classroom that's bagging on a lawn mower. We're not adding the computer tech. We've got the coordinator, and a better usage of that resource we have. We're not going to add staff there. We're reducing some of the clerks. So these are initial things that the administration made. Some of the clerks, teacher assistants. We've got a long-term sub to replace. Elementary school gifting and talenting. Now, I heard a couple of people this morning say that gift and talenting isn't working. But there's a consensus that there's a better way to do it than we're doing it today here at the elementary school. We would not touch the program at the middle school. So I'm going to be quiet. Program at the middle school, not about for debate, to be real. But in combination of the administration and teachers came to the board and said, I think there's a better way that we can do gift and talenting here at the elementary school. They're our experts, so we're going to listen to them. So this allows us to move some resources around.
So can I get some clarification, please?
Yep.
You want to reduce some, you're going to not have the option to teach the computer tech, but with the schools. And you're looking at teacher assistant positions, non-regular ones. So nine teacher assistants. Can you explain to the background in the elementary school what that looks like? To remove, to recommend the removal of?
Would it be, the recommendation was to remove nine from the district. I think we could go without removing that. So what you're seeing right now are all the things that we've been talking about. So, you know, don't over, I want to say overreact, but don't react to necessarily all of this on the left.
I'm just trying to ask some clarification. And?
Well, we've got, I believe it's 35 regular TAs throughout the district.
No, we don't, we have nine regular TAs from the board's budget.
Right, but how many, how many regular TAs do we have throughout the district? Regardless of who pays for them.
A regular, an additional seven out of type of one.
Okay, so we lose roughly half of the total number of regular TAs we have. Some are paid by the town, some are paid by a grant from the state.
And then you're looking at the gifted program, which is basically enrichment with Mrs. Holcomb.
Yes.
Are they doing that program?
Doing it in different way. I can't tell you specifics because I haven't seen all the specifics yet. But when the educators come to me and said, or come to the board and said, we think there's a better way to do it, we can re-employ some other assets and save some money. That to me, I'm going to listen to our educators, and that's okay.
Okay, so Mrs. Holcomb, if you're talking to us?
James, who bubbled up through the administration from the staff here at the elementary school. I personally talked to three teachers, spoke to three teachers here at the elementary school, and said, almost verbatim what I heard from Prankad. So when the, when the school community comes together and says, is it better what you're doing? I'm all ears.
Will you get specific on that?
Well, we're still going to have specific support. So I can't give you specifics tonight. My hope is that before the board approves the budget Thursday night at our board meeting, we'll go through all the details of what the change in the program is made. So a little commercial for our board meeting Thursday night. So again, here's, you know, some additional things that we're up for discussion. We've got some savings in professional development. We can reduce some special ed legal fees. We reduce the superintendent's office staff by one. So I think it's important that we try to keep as many educators as we can. Yeah, and literally, if you just look at the list, we're taking 300 of 1,000. Yeah, so sped office supply budget's 1,000, we're going to cut that by $300. We're going to cut the library budget by $200. We're going to cut, you know, the office supply budget for the Board of Education by $1,000. We don't need as much paper as we get. So we're basically trying to shake just a little bit off of everybody. So that everybody kind of feels a little bit of that kind of. Question? I'm going to hold it. All right, go. Yeah, I've got to be more, but, you know, sweeping the nickel and dime here and there. We spent $1,000 on any of these things. I don't know what we spent $1,000 on any of these lots, but we can start budget by a couple of dollars. You know, will it hurt? Will it hurt that one project, with that one teacher, that one time? But again, I'd rather do that than have to eliminate an educator. Because all of this stuff, crazy enough, all that adds up to about $90,000. It's not a decision that I don't know. Advertising, we spent up to $6,000 advertising open jobs. And this economy, I was shocked by that. We're going to rack that budget by $5,000. There are better ways that we can spring from that. Heavens, we're looking for heaven. And it's just things like that that, you know, we feel it gives a better, you know, use of our money. $1,000 on salt and sand, or $1,250 on salt and sand. Thankfully, we're having a good winter. Not my pocket. We haven't needed to use nearly as much to carry that savings. And thankfully, Hartford, hopefully, they will come through with additional ECS credits. ECS is educational cost sharing, so they live to towns for the purpose specifically of education. So what we'll be asking the board to endorse on Thursday night, and then the Board of Finance to endorse, would be that 100% of that comes to the school budget. Because they can do one of two things with it. They can use this money to offset what the town would give us, or the town can keep their funding of this thing and make this a period. We'd like to see a period for two reasons. One, helps us to get close to the net zero. And two, who knows if this is actually going to happen? Because we'll have to vote on our budget Thursday night. We'll present to the Board of Finance at least March 6. By the end of March, the Board of Finance will have ours and the general government budget for the town combined. Like here is an equal, we'll vote on it. I cannot guarantee that Hartford's going to take action on this before we're done. Okay, they may not, they may say, no, we're going to cut Malloy's request by X percent. If it was 63, now it becomes 45. So while we've got it included in the calculations, both revenue and expenditure, I'm trying to kind of keep it off to the side because we don't know if it's going to quite materialize. And if it's going to materialize, capable of materializing in this way. So, at the end of the day, this is our operating budget, 15,691,636, this fiscal year that we are currently in. If we start with that, we add the two buses, police payers, we add the 1.95% increase for the academy, and 100% of ECS population, we're looking at a net new budget for next fiscal year of just $1,515,900, which would be a $200,000 increase for a 1.33. But if my math was right, the actual money coming from the town itself, because remember, this 63,633 is coming directly from the state, would be, we're going to use these two together together for a 0.92% budget decrease. Keeping class sizes as we show it, moving some staff around, doing things a little smarter, keeping the teacher assistants, so this does not eliminate the non-teacher assistants. I think we can get pretty darn close to a net zero. Question?
First, thank you. Thank you for trying your very best to maintain and retain the teachers, staff, and programming that our children doesn't really need efficient of. Because you said, your job is to help the school and the board. I want my board of ed to ask me, not only for my child, but for all the children at West Stock, and for the future children of West Stock, to have the best. I want you guys to bring the best for them. I don't want you to continue pennies and, you know, sacrificing things, cutting our children's opportunity for learning. I don't want them to be competing in global economy when they get to the math and training.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's my first thing. But what's the likelihood of you presenting this proposed budget to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance says, eh, not going to happen?
Well, the worst-case scenario would be that they remove these two line items. So they say, you know what, we cannot afford to lose anyone in the 16.7, or I'm sorry, 15.7 you've got this year. So we would basically have to find funding for these three items. And we have to come back to the table and say, okay, my person will take it, we don't want to lose buses.
Great. I would have that bus meeting for the Board of Ed of the year, or for the transfer of the person as well. And some of the buses sound horrible, but if I'm shipping a school bus that needs repair versus a teacher in the classroom? My goal is for the classroom.
You and I are on the same page?
I want, I want to know that the board is on our?
You and I are on the same page. I won't speak for the other members. But if I had to find ways to make this work, would it be painful? All of the things that were on the list initially, teacher assistants and all those things, that will all come back into play because that list was originally put together to close an even bigger gap in this. So those were, you know, we sat down, we approached a budget differently this year. We sat down and looked at it holistically and said, okay. If we had to do this, what are all the areas? We looked at every single area, and what are all the areas that could take a haircut, be eliminated? And that's where we started to get the feedback boiling up. There's a different way to do gift and talenting. And I wish I had more to answer on that through the day. I don't, I don't know all of those specifics.
When do we discuss that?
Thursday night.
This Thursday night? Can we discuss that?
Saturday night, middle school music room.
And we accept audience feedback and our presentation?
It's always one of the first things on our list, right after the pledge and, and the, it's?
So you encourage us to call the speaker?
Absolutely.
I'm just confused, I mean, I guess this is a work group. You've had the nine buses in there, what is those?
Well, so the idea was that those were all these areas of topic of discussion. We didn't get into the specifics. We didn't get into the specifics because they're actually, if I look at... They go on for pages, and it's literally, "We're not gonna buy a fireproof safe." We shouldn't have went through that before, "We're not gonna buy a fireproof safe."
So I'm understanding that cost that you had already cut, and I think there's something for a cost to it.
Exactly. And literally, it was, check this rash this morning at 8:15, and we were reading in the music room here. To figure out a way to do it, that was really and truly, in my opinion, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, in my opinion there right now, this is the least impactful review. Is it better to have a teacher assistant or a fireproof safe and sped legal fees that we may or may not spend? Those two items pay for one TA. So we went through and did a lot of those puts and takes. You know, reducing, there was a request for iPads for special ed. The program that they wanted to use this from now, and if I could shave the $1,600 for it, I'd do it in the argument. I'd have an iPad as quite my bookend. But that or regular TA that can have, you know, touch fifty kids?
Yeah. And then for the fifthness, if for you, for her, for like, my parents, it's all serving for my school and that class. Every year of that class gets kind of overwhelmed. I mean, my son has always had a different posture, and God bless his teacher, she's doing a phenomenal job. But I think that at some point in time, the future, you can't just let that pass. I mean, I understand that she gets in the main grade, it's immediate, because she just gets through. But I understand that everybody can pass their class on, and I get that. But this is like the, the area that we're gonna be having over the rest of the class.
So, look, I approach you back and flip back to this for our enrollment. Because our fifth grade next year will be applied for another four students. And we've got five sessions.
No, it's a way to do our sixth grade class.
I understand. There's nothing we can do for this school year.
Absolutely.
So what I'm saying with next year, grade four this year is next year is grade five. So we can move staff around to do that, as you look at it. This year's grade five will be next year's grade six, there's 96 kids, I'm sorry, there's a hundred more kids. Four sessions.
That's still too high.
Looking around, why?
And after years.
Yeah, of course. 20 to 25 is the recommended number.
But I just have to say, we just want you to fight for our, and I know you're in a financial difficulty, but what you have here on the stand is we're gonna go from 19, because from what I've seen in studies, 18 is the optimal. Anything above 18 is not effective as far as class size is concerned. And my daughter started her kindergarten, I was last to 18 until this year, and they're graded there at 27. And I have to say, it's not because of the teacher, but the quality of education has gone down. I have to spend at least an hour with her, teaching her what her teacher is trying to do every day. That's my goal as a parent, but it didn't do that last year. And the types of projects that these kids are working on, because the teachers just can't do it, they're doing the best.
They're doing less than you.
Or she can busy work, because the teachers can't use the philosophy program in the classroom, because they're just trying to stay above. So these things will advance everything all the way through, it's not hard on that.
So we want you to talk, we want you to hear the conversation, your thoughts, but carry us, our voice. Even if it's not your thoughts, all of us.
I understand how it affects you.
Trust me, I...
Because people are upset.
I think, yeah, again, the 20 to 25 number is correct. The question is, given the economic situation this town is in, have you heard this years before? You'll hear it till the cows come home. The question is, teacher assistants or another classroom teacher?
Bang on the door of the board of finance, squeeze something out, like what you did this morning in eighth grade. Make it, you know, at least try.
You know, give us someone's gonna answer to our kids, someone's gonna fight for our kids. I know we need to be physically responsible, but you're talking about...
I would say, I would say these nine folks, including the two that couldn't make it this morning, are all behind that. But I go to the board of finance meetings, and there are three people in that row. And then, you guys, credit for the frustration, there are three people in the row. I would love to make my budget $20 million and have class sizes of 18 kids, because I've seen that study. There's some debate in academic community whether 18s are in number 20 or 25.
Well, you know, a lot of the dynamic of the typical kids that are entering the Woodstock system, and also changing, that's also taking different holes on...
Getting much more competitive. And I have had one of my...
Nothing competitive, but I mean, there, the kids have greater means than they've been in the past.
Absolutely. And my son is now an eighth grader, he's starting his kindergarten, so I live the progression you guys are going through right now. Come to the board of finance meeting on March 6.
We will, as I last year.
The study is irrelevant, because when you have 18 kids, the teacher goes to have way more contact with the kid.
Absolutely.
When you have 25, it gets harder and harder to have kind of individual contact time with those kids. And as a result, and if there are, which never happens, in a larger class size, certain individual students who demand disproportionate amounts of time.
Sure.
Kids who are doing the right thing, they get less and less individual time. But again, the study can sell you one thing or another. A lot of mine is anticoagulant, when you're working with their children, you know that they're not being observed. And you kind of survive through it, but survival is really not enough.
I think the term that's being thrown around right now is warehouse, or processing. Sure. And that's not the right approach to education, but there's gotta be a non-simply bad thing.
No, 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 that shouldn't be asked, that's right. But you should take that off the table and reiterate your thinking, that's all, that's what works.
Well, I'm just, again, I agree with you 100%. I'm just dealing with the reality of the town of Woodstock. Please, come and make these things hurt to the board of finance. Because we've been saying, the person who's on the board for the last six years, every year we say the same thing.
I have a question, is that your impression that that's what we're doing in the store now? Do you feel that we're warehousing our students? Because that's what you feel, and he needs to know that. I mean, that's a big deal.
I, my personal feeling, and this is just my personal feeling, is we're starting to move more in that, we're starting to move in that direction faster than we ever have in the past.
But I have a question, why, why not bring the budget that we need to the board of finance? Because that's gonna make it that.
See, I know, it's a good question.
Because, like I...
You gotta see the reality.
I just wanna say that having sat through many budget cycles in many different towns, every town is the same. And what my concern is, is that philosophically, the charge of the board bed should be to put forth the best education for the students in the town that they are representing. And in saying that, I do wanna say that the choices that you made and the decisions where you had, where you placed your priorities, and I think you've done a wonderful job in looking at it and saying, "What do we really need to preserve? What could go?" So I make it for that, and I appreciate that, that I think that your thinking about what's important for kids and education is accurate, but my concern, and my really, really big concern, is that what you've done is you've taken away our voice as the town's people. Because you know that when you hand this to them, this is not the budget that is going to be put in place next year. That has never happened, it won't happen. The costs are gonna go further. And so what you tried to preserve is not going to be preserved. And what I think, what I see board's been doing is the job of the board of finance. You are splitting it down, that's the job of the board of finance. And it's our job as the town's people to go to that meeting. If I go to that meeting, there's not much I can say, because you've taken away already what the board of finance should be giving, right? Not the board actually should be giving.
So we're gonna break a couple of things there. And just the course of history. Last year, exactly what we're advocating is what we did. And it was, it was my turn, get on the wagon. And it was actually detrimental, because it was more onerous what we went through. Last year, we said, "You know what, we're shooting for the moon." I went through that process, I stood up from the town hall and said, "We need $600,000." And Chairman Harper looked at me and said, "You know what? The year before, we came in with, I don't wanna call it a cheap package, but a more realistic and acceptable budget." And I will correct you where you went off, it went through without a hitch. They approved, because we asked for some buses and some kitchen equipment and a maintained program. That went through without a hitch. Last year, we flubbed tooth and nail and had to go back two or three times, I believe, George, to get the budget. So, well, and trust me, we're not taking away your voice. If you show up en masse on the 6th and tell the board of finance, "We think the board of ed did a good job, but we want more." More voice.
Hit the water.
Hold on, can I please finish? Your voice, guys, guys, your voice, your voice will carry more than ours as a board will.
And Mr. Holcomb, we appreciate the fact that you trimmed it, like Wendy said, you appreciate the fact that you proposed something that seems very real, and you need to be diplomatic when you're dealing with a different force. However, what I think many of the audience members and many people in the school who don't participate in meetings, you know what some of these need, I try my hardest to be part of it.
Absolutely.
You have to hear, whether you agree with me politically or philosophically or not, you have to carry the voice of us, you have to advocate. Whether your child's minute group here is in school and found well or not, that's the most MO of this. We need to do better for our children. Better, even if we have less money, we need to do better. So you need to carry that voice to the board, you need to carry that for the children, whether you have children in the school or not.
And I don't disagree. What I'm telling you realistically, your voice matters more at the board of finance than this board's does. You can disagree, you can not believe that as a philosophy. Past practice that we're doing this in the last five years, that isn't even the case.
So can I just talk about that?
Sure.
I, I understand what you're saying. One thing though, is that once it's removed, it cannot be come back anymore. So I ask you to think about that, and to hear that that's what the people in this audience are saying. We don't want you to take it out yet. If you order finance, of course, you know, I was at this meeting last year, the room was packed. People spoke out, people said, "Take it to a vote, let us decide." It went to the vote, it passed. I mean, so, I really ask that you go back and reconsider what you've eliminated up to this point. If this is where we have to go after going through, you know, several meetings in the board of finance, and that's where I went as well. But overwhelmingly, the voice at those meetings last year was in favor of maintaining what was there and not taking out anything else. And so what makes you think that those voices won't be there this time?
So I don't think the voices won't be there, but I think what we're taking out is not tremendously impactful, to be honest with you.
But I think you need to add a teacher for the fifth and sixth graders, to change those numbers. So make the budget with the increase of adding a teacher for fifth and sixth grade, and let them take it out.
Yeah, let them take it out.
Fight with that, we're fighting for, we need you to...
Let's get that statement, it will be there today.
You folks see your address, we'll take it up Thursday. All right. And this is what's on the table now, that's why we have this form.
That's what's important, we need to find a way to be there here.
Michelle?
Michelle, I just agree with you on the point that our voice matters more than theirs. I think they both matter, both voices matter equally. And at the board of finance, when the budget is presented, we're allowed to comment at the moment, after they go in on what you already presented. So our voice will not really matter at that.
This is the time.
I asked a stupid question last year, and was told that they can only go back a couple more. So what you guys put to them, that's the starting point. And if you guys put to them, I remember asking this in...
No, I remember, they got different answers every time I'm asked the question. Said, "Well, I don't know what the true answer is."
This is why I would say, if anybody on the board feel like 2.44% increase, the original full-time budget is unreasonable. If you do, then go ahead and, you know, make the change that you want. And I think that you have been conscientious about that, and that's some really good work here. But, you know, that and the board can say, sure, absolutely, that can be tough. But if we're talking about, when we talk about the gifted program in the elementary school, I want to hear from the principal, from the other teachers, that that's the best way to do it, is by removing that position. It may be the best visibly and economically, it may be the best way to state that program, but it's the best for our kids. Because there's nothing in your website, in your mission, about board finance. And I understand the realities of it, and I understand the realities of Proposition 46. But there are other things that you guys need to look at. I think when you talk about passing through some things to the town, you know, say mandated programs are not covered under Proposition 46, SRBI, it takes a lot of money. I believe right now, that's still part of the budget. That can somehow be removed and all put aside and say, hey, we can't only consider this to remove it of our budget. So I think there's some other areas to be created there as well. But I would ask you as a parent, I'm not so eager to get rid of that 27, or 25, or 26, aside from discussions of what's the philosophy for class sizes. I don't see that in here, and maybe you guys can make it work, maybe Dr. America can make it work. But unless you really think a 2.44% increase is unreasonable, give it a shot. Have this in your back pocket, but go forward with this. And then ultimately, the voters are gonna decide. I'll give the finance meeting. But as you said, you know, once put forward there, they're just listening to us. And, yeah, so you guys have a larger responsibility, a larger commitment here. So I'm just asking, if you find one of those terms, then they're worth it.
And that's really why we have these forms to take this kind of feedback, because if this may not be the best plan out there, it's just one.
Sure. As, I look at another district that was approaching this point. And we just caution you about going ahead with the 0% increase. Because then the expectation is you have to hear that that's what you're gonna come forward. As we all know, costs increase, things increase. Be as teachers, but you know, agrees, to save jobs in the following year, get a class one. And the teaching assistants. And you have class numbers of 25 to 27, no teaching assistants.
No, this would be all of our TAs 45.
Right, I'm just saying, if you do...
No, I understand what you're saying.
There's no getting it back.
Right.
Because they're not gonna take the increase.
Can you, SRBI, is that part of, what you heard, that the full-time special education, that is it?
SRBI is a state and federal mandate that requires that rather than using, as we used to, or were allowed in the past, to use cognitive testing to identify or not identify students for special education. SRBI is basically a three-tiered system whereby we use assessments on a regular basis. Those assessments then identify students for us that might need one-on-one attention, a small group attention, a repeated attention over time. So it's basically something that we're mandated now to place into our daily educational process. It's not an added cost, except if you look at it from the perspective, we're using teachers to deliver those scientifically researched-based interventions to deliver the kind of small group or one-on-one attention to students. We have not added staff to do that. We have reconstructed the day, we have reconstructed how our teachers, both at the elementary and at the middle school, deliver those SRBI services.
Well, we have refused from Barrow, but you know, we're accommodating.
Well... I mean, the value to all that time.
Oh, there is a value to it, you're absolutely correct.
Attached price that, yeah.
Well, yes, but in terms of the way the budget has been constructed, we're not adding money in order to deliver those services. If we did it some other way, where we hired staff, future assistants, or, yes.
But there are costs, there's a cost associated with that, and if that, I mean, that's part of the thing. Problem for grade six allows for certain costs to come out of that budget. And if SRBI identifies as a special education mandate, it can come out of the budget. And then that cost frees up a lot of the budget. So...
So we'll definitely, we'll have to take another look at that.
Can I ask, just to clarify, the increase of 382,000, is that the superintendent's budget?
Increase of 300? At the very beginning?
Cover sheet, the sheet.
Yes.
That was given to you.
Yeah, this was...
So would you present it today for the reduction of the 300?
Correct.
I would say, I have a problem with that, because a couple of people on the board of finance say a zero, doesn't mean we commit. I mean, I think we should trust the superintendent and the administration, that this is what we need. And I think the board should advocate for that budget. I have a problem with further reducing... I have a problem with further reducing what has already been reduced now, probably is already a tight budget.
Well, again, I think we're just trying to be pragmatic.
And I, I understand that the school functions, the test scores are high, the children seem fine, they get through the grades, and that's a great mentality the town has. We all go through it, we love the school, the parents are involved and whatnot. So why bother increasing the money, right? But imagine what our children can benefit from and the opportunities they could have with this cash and a few more dollars.
But look at it from this perspective as well, because I'm a parent, currently I've been involved. But also in that aspect, we've got declining enrollment. So not all of this is just cut, cut, cut. We're also looking at spending money differently. So an example would be the elementary school gift and delta. When our educators come to us and say, "There's a better way to do it." That is, costs zero, maybe even save us some money. Let's try it out, just like we did with the report cards.
Did they continue unsolicited?
They did.
Okay.
They did.
And you want to talk about that Thursday night, you said?
Well, we'll get more detail on Thursday. I don't have it tonight because I have to do it to us this morning.
I get a question, a follow-up question. The computer technician was originally a graduate of the university. The, the.
No, I originally took, I originally took a computer technician in because prior to next year's budget, we have one person on staff, Mr. Olson, he's our technology coordinator. And over the years, I would say the last six or seven years, we have added a tremendous amount of technology in the form of smart boards, computer carts, computers in classrooms and what have you. We want Mr. Olson to be doing things like managing the servers and what have you, working with teachers to help them incorporate technology into their classrooms. What we find his time is being consumed with is more of the day-to-day technical stuff of keeping stuff running. I've said to the Board of Education on a number of occasions, they have spent, and I think graciously so, a large amount of money on technology. I don't want that to go to waste because you can't get to the problems immediately for the teacher to use that stuff in the classroom. That's why we put it.
And so therefore, in that classroom of 27, when the smart board is ineffective, we have 20 same kids who are not giving the kind of instruction they need because you block off that technician, therefore a person who can't get around all the classrooms. We have technology sitting in classrooms that doesn't get the service. You have teachers who have computers that are broken that are infect paper bags. They're 10 to 20 years behind the rest of the borough that has somebody fixing their technology when it's needed. And they're even not, "I can't use the technology, therefore I cannot keep up with students who have more sophisticated technology at home than they do in an instructional location." It's a, it's a real disappointing approach to the budget.
That's actually a good segue, because one of the things that the board has asked the administration to do is, instead of hiring somebody to do this, there were at least three companies in the four surrounding towns that could provide that service probably for less than what it would cost us to hire somebody. So while we've moved it.
And where's that going, where's that going?
You didn't see them as a deduction, because that's the difference between the salary and what we would pay and outsource to do that. So, I mean, that's an example of looking at, trying to do things differently. Instead of just throwing money at the problem, throwing a body at the problem. And maybe we hire the folks out, or we hire a model contractor, or wherever. A, it's helping the local economy, and B, it's providing as good, if not better, a service for a cheaper dollar. That's a win-win for everybody, in my book.
You gave them the same response time in the last full 27.
Depending on, I mean, we haven't talked through the entire RFP process, but you can get 15-minute response times if you still want to pay for it. But the luxury of having somebody on staff who isn't dealing with sort of the, you know, finite technology space, the backend, the upgrades, the processing. It took Mr. Olson two months to load Microsoft Office 2010 on all the machines. Is that the best effective use of his time? I would say it's probably more that of having to work with a teacher and outsource that work to somebody that doesn't work for the district that can do it for cheap without employing a company. And we're looking at all of those things to, to see how we can provide the best level of service, but be reasonable with how we spend the money at the same time. It's a balancing act, it really is.
Have spoken to the surrounding towns to try that.
Hi, well, there. I mean, our high conversations would have been primarily with the sending towns and with Woodstock Academy. I don't know that any of the sending towns that we work with, possibly open, what have you, have outsourced. We are looking into it. Mr. Campbell, I believe you have people on staff and you do not outsource other than the kind of things that we do with Apex, is that what that's it?
Well, I can share with you that I used to work with Tom Redd as my reading specialist. And so a very tiny type of technology. And we did outsource to a company in Ploton, and it did not work. And they currently have a computer tech person on staff because it is much more efficient. Things are, are being fixed in a tiny manner. And to follow up a question to that is, how aware is the Board of the Common Core standards? And what that means for the town in the next couple of years? Because the Common Core, for those who don't know, the CNT will be gone in a couple of years. And it will require that the standards have to be taken on computers. And not only that, the Common Core also requires a tremendous amount of integration of research skills, technology skills. And that budget that you should have been funding is stripping away the support system to the library media in both buildings. It's stripping away the computer and technology support for both buildings. And this is something that you have to plan for.
Absolutely. But I just correct you a little bit, we're not stripping away. We still have a full-time person who is seven, well, not seven, 24, but they're a full-time employee. All we're doing is looking to offload some of the work, some of the, the non-critical work that needs to be done to somebody else. We're not looking to replace, scale our technology.
If I could, just for a second, because I don't want a misperception to be out there. And I don't mean sort of intended to, but it's what I heard. I want you to know that we do not have computers, what have you, sitting around broken at this point.
If they get broken, then they don't get serviced quickly, and they're ineffective. But we still have a full-time employee here.
Here's the thing, and what I keep mentioning that is, if you are not staying ahead of it, you are simply letting it slip away. In other words, so if you're not ending it this year, guess what? I'm going to ask for a 0% exit guarantee. So what else is going to be planned? Because now you're at a point where you draw a line in sand with this. I work in disruption technology, that's what I do. I have to do more hours than I want, more things about. It's not so much the broken computers, it's how do I best integrate? How do I do so it's seamless? Some of your teachers have that, but it's not just about sticking the, the great equipment up on the wall. And that's where I think that there's a lot to speak. And I, I'm not critical of teachers at all, I think a lot of them are making great inputs with it. When you've got 27 kids in your class and you can't get the smart boards to open up, you're going to move on. And so it is a responsible thing, consistently to do, is get those resources used. Because in three years, they're out of there.
I agree 100%, that's why we're looking at things like taking Mr. Olson, who is a full-time employee, using him for exactly as you described, and taking off of his plate things like two months' worth of work to upgrade around the computers and that kind of thing. That, while it's important, we can offload that. And if it gets done over a course of, of three weekends by some outsourcing agency doing it, that's quite frankly, cheaper than hiring a full-time body that wouldn't do the type of emergency break that's in it, because we already have that coverage.
And if you hit the right one, I would say, I can tell you what, and there's.
And, and I've had good experience with employees and outsourcing. There's at least three, about four companies we have requested or responded to the RFP. We haven't gone through them yet, and maybe that it's cheaper to hire a body, in which case we'll be back at the Board of Finance to do that. And this is still a lot of moving parts, you know, so just keep that in the back of your mind. But also, in the back of your mind, and I know this is not going to be insipid, and I don't mean to debate, we're looking at declining enrollments as well. Okay, there's no way, shape, or form about it. When I started to get qualified years ago, we had a lot more kids than we have this year and we're projecting. So while costs go up, technology goes up, we have expenses that go up, we have to balance that with the fact that we're streaming less kids. So it's, you know, it's again, it's that balancing. Can we get everything we want? No. Should we get what we, what we in the administration think is, you know.
I, I think that, to go back a quick day, I'm not going to beat it over and over. But the Board of Finance knows that the PTO and Woodstock Education Foundation fund a lot of these technologies. And they put the smart boards in the classrooms. And they provide a lot of the resources for the teachers to have these. So they figure, "You've got a PTO raising money, why should we bother to come up with this?" But I think it's generalized responsibility.
Never a better.
No, I'm not, I'm just speculating.
You've got, you've got a lot of years for additional funding for smart boards.
I'm just saying that there is a lot of out of support, I think, for some of these. And I think that, that we all need to get behind the concept that this is sort of not an accoutrement to the classroom, but it's the actual mandatory need of a classroom. And that you all need to understand how vital it is to our teachers' ability to teach them, to have the technology in the room, and to advocate for that cost in addition to all the other things. And the stronger that we maintain and make our schools, the more appealing our schools are to be. And they are only local, I thought possibly, when the academy rebalanced perhaps.
Good.
Two points, first of all, as a faculty, I appreciate the lack of, of, we may be for getting services and we, but this is before, but this isn't just up for playing, you want to use them. I think that's fantastic. And I think it's physically respectable and easy to use. But I actually think we revisit the SRBI issue and want to identify who is special. Because if, if there are things that are special and they're mandated to be committed, and, and there's this slippery slope that regular classroom teacher time is the weakest to fund that and to meet that requirement, then if, to the detriment of the general student population, then it does not mean that this is going to affect the SRBI provision and mandates. So when we're looking at your budget, just, I would ask you to look at that in my mind. What is a really special employee, what really needs to be committed, what is mandated and what is not? And I think it's, if that is a true need.
And that will, we'll definitely get that back and we'll talk about it on Thursday.
I mean, I just wanted to mention something, it's been one of the newer numbers, I don't expect the board to know. What you're looking at is really an interesting, hard-looking proposal that was done by the Finance Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Board of Ed. In many ways, what you're seeing tonight is what many of us on the Board of Ed are seeing today. What you're seeing is what a lot of us are seeing the first time as well. What they did is a hard job. What they did is, they were given a cast by both the Finance, the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed, which said, "If we did have to come under the zero, what would that mean to us?" And that's critical information for us to know what that means to us. Because it wouldn't be hard to create a budget that gives us everything we want. That'd be pretty easy to put together. So, but I think what, what they did in a tremendous amount of work was put together what would happen if we really were forced to keep to a zero increase. And this forum was invaluable to all of us, you know, and me in particular as a new member, to know where the passion lies and where the beliefs lie about what that would do to us. Because we haven't voted on it, we haven't really even discussed it. That's Thursday. And I would really encourage, I mean, pretty much everybody's here except for two, right? So we've heard a lot of different things at, at this meeting. And, but I think that, that this very small subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee did a phenomenal job of identifying what would happen to us if we were forced into that position, in their opinion, after a lot of hard work. So I would really encourage people to show up again Thursday and help us get to a really good end result for our proposal.
I just want to repeat that one point. I just want to try to promote Board of Finance, you know, we let the Stoney seniors, over 200 seniors, say, "Please put the highest amount of levels of outreach in the project." Let the town go on, and then they completely dust because, you know, and then the Navy cut that to 25, 32, 000. Now, they literally said that to me. Please, I, I would like to see it go to, you know, to 2.3%. Maybe I shouldn't just wait and ask for the cut. But if we can all get your parents out at the meeting to tell the Board of Finance, "We want this back up." My daughter and my son are both in the middle classes. My daughter, who in pre-k kindergarten, who's friends, opened over here for how well she reads, how far ahead she is with all the kids, first grade in class 25, felt like mine. Okay, and it's not the teacher's fault. And I'm, I'm not going to sit back and, I see, I saw in the school, kids wait. So I see so many of these children who really benefit from the teacher being able to give them more of the time. I, I overheard a teacher one day saying, she felt awful, but she just realized that these kids left to go from my class, and she didn't get to spend it until time of three. That, that's what our teachers are about. They, they want to give a million percent to our kids. And we are shortchanging the kids. So, I mean, I demand that we have smaller class sizes. Not just, you know, I know you guys put your puffs off and cut things, love the writing. But, I mean, we just need to make sure we have priorities. If so many kids are not having their talents recognized and having all their skills developed the way they could be, because we've got seven more children in classrooms than necessary. That, that's not fair. And it's not right.
I just need to reiterate, and echo Dawn, you know, Holly, my lead, about the fifth and sixth grade in particular, on that board is very troubling to me. I have two boys in fourth grade. I see them being so frustrated because they're ready to go on in math. They're ready to go on and bring in certain areas, and they're held back because they're in class 27 kids. And that teacher is awesome, she does a great job. My kids love homeschooling. I don't want them to learn, to not love learning because they're frustrated, because they can't go on, because they're ready to, but most of the class isn't. Because that teacher can't individualize because she has to take the needs of the many and not the few because she has that kind of class sense. I think it's great that the academy can offer all these different levels of math. That's wonderful, I applaud you for looking at what your kids need and trying to make it happen for them. That's what we need to do as parents, though. That's what you guys need to do as the board. I applaud Superintendent for looking in the mirror, looking at his own office, seeing what he can do to cut, I appreciate that. I appreciate, you know, the fact that you go line by line saying, you know, okay, you won't get the safe, and you won't do this. But at the same time, I think if we go with this, this is not optimal for those, some of those kids. I like some of the class sizes in elementary, you know, I think that's wonderful. I'm not here to educate my own children, but for all the kids. I trust Mr. Towe and Mrs. Bulko that maybe with those smaller class sizes, there's a better way to to be committed, because I think those kids really do need to be propelled forward. Because when they know it's the academy, I don't want my kids in that high level, because they can do that. I don't want them feeling like they're always frustrated that they're held back, and I see them on a computer doing other games and stuff that are way above their level that they're doing in class. I just think that we have a unique opportunity here to maybe go to Board of Finance, give them what we really know our kids need, instead of, you know, saying, oh, you're not going to give it to us anyway, so we won't. We always have to want the best and then trim back, not go in and say, oh, well, this is, this is really what we wanted. If I always just wanted my kids to be the status quo, they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to achieve what they're, you know, capable of achieving. So I, I just would ask you to maybe reconsider, you know, stick in two more teachers.
This hasn't been, this is the level seven, this hasn't been going on. For some of the board members, this is the first time they've seen it. We literally put it together this morning because there are about 7,000 landings in our budget carry. And the page goes, I mean, it goes on to the 35 pages, going through each and every one.
Just spend time on it like you do. Go over the Common Two Combs, cuts are awesome, those are amazing. See if you can wiggle some room out, no more current coffee makers. See what we can, we can shut off on the PTO, what have you, what's on the. What I think you want to hear, though, is our passion about this.
Absolutely. No, that's what we have. We've been hanging up for a while there, I'm sorry.
It's getting carried. Well, first I was going to go back to the gift and talent comment, and I was glad that this was black running up and talking about class sizes. That's exactly what.
That's exactly what my concern would be, especially not alone, as well as with the SRBI and how that's funded and identifying special needs kids. But it's also about identifying kids that are exceptional. If you are in that class size, you know, thankfully my son's nine. He's in fourth grade this year and has a good class size of only 19. However, any of us who volunteered or have been or seen or have a family member in one of those class sizes, need to know how exceptional those children are. They are not getting the attention they need because the class size is too large. And cutting this gift and talent program, I'm curious to know how it was, how it came across to all the teachers. Was this only a couple of teachers that brought it up? Or was it a collaborative effort with the elementary school in general, making sure that Mrs. Bulko was on board with changing it? Making sure all the other teachers were on board with changing it? It's important that it doesn't get cut. It's important that although everything can be modified and improved in some fashion, it's improved in a way that helps all the children that need it. Not just because of money, not just because of time, but because the kids are exceptional and they deserve that extra time to be exceptional.
So just, I wanna respond to, to what she said. That's not gonna trouble that. My understanding is it bubbled up from the second, third and fourth grade teachers long before the budget conversation ever came up. So again, I'm gonna put my trust in the folks that work in this building every day to say, you know what, we've looked at it and there's a different way to do it. Just like the board put their, our trust in, uh, I think it was Mrs. Gresh led the, led the program. But the elementary school teachers came together and said, there's a better way to do the core cards. We're spending too much time doing the core cards the way we did it. They developed the system. We asked a lot of questions about it. We poked that, we made it come back a couple of times and ultimately we approved it. And now I've only heard positive things about it. So I mean, a lot of this stuff bubbles up from the school outside of the budget. It just so happens that the way that they think they can do it takes us some money as well. Let's add a debt. Yes?
Um, okay. So after doing all of this, I think that the, that what you proposed is smart, realistic, makes sense. However, now that you have heard all of the concerns and we want our voice heard, we want to add, you know, two more teachers or whatever else. If you are hearing this. Right, you're hearing this and many of it here because perhaps Thursday night we can't go and perhaps we can't go over to the budget for finding a focus. You, nine people are our elected, are elected people to represent us. And this is why I hate politics is because you don't always get to hear us so you have to make smart decisions on your own. And I thank you for that. But now that you are hearing us, um, can we feel confident that when we leave here, you're gonna go back and make these decisions based on this? And go and ask for more money and go and ask them because we all know that, like we said earlier, it's possible that, you know, we're not gonna get what we asked for. But just go and ask which of your three or four teachers and see what happens.
So just to follow on the process is the Finance Committee will meet 6 o'clock Thursday night before the, the regular board meeting. Uh, this will be a very big topic at our regular board meeting. And I think you've gotta give us the opportunity to collectively talk through all of the things that, that we've heard this morning. Figure out how we can do it. Maybe it is just a simple ban on a teacher here or two teachers or... We've got some staff members here, not only teachers, but other staff members. Maybe they can further your audience, they can help us. There may be a way that we can do it kinda like what happened with the gift and talent. Maybe not, uh, but we'll take all of that into account Thursday night.
But I, I wanna know that you're actually fighting for us. Because when you say come out and show your support, well, if we can't be there, that's why you're here. I mean, write down notes, quote us, quote us today and say, listen, I have ten people here that were there. These are their names. I mean, I'm happy to do that. I don't see anybody writing notes and saying...
You know, we've got to take the quarter.
They're all the way down.
Perfect, see why we love technology? Who's on the Subcommittee of Finance?
Uh, it's Mr. Bernard, Mr. Frank Houser and myself.
Two not new guys, one old, I mean...
Technically, I'm the youngest of all of them.
Sorry, sorry. And it is, sorry about that. Hey, um, and... And one, so the three of you and, and, um, and it's open to public.
Absolutely. All right.
I come 6:00 and just like...
I'm in 6:00 and listen to how the sausage gets made.
Sure.
Okay, that, I have a confession.
It's just an expression.
So I just wanna say that, um, when Superintendent proposed which was the $382,000 increase, I, I believe that Superintendent and the two principals put this together knowing what the economic times are calling for and that they were as cruel as they felt they should be. And when we said, earlier you said, well, yes, we would love to go with the best. This, I'm sure, I'm gonna ask you, this is not the best. This is what they feel they can get by.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, and I want, I, I want the Board of Ed members to have that mindset. Because to me, this is what we can get by. This is not benefiting us head. This is not making us a school system or a talent that's going to be on the edge. So I just want the board to be clear in their mind that when you're defending this against the Board of Finance, this $382,000 increase, it's not, you know, cheating the rule. It's trying to maintain and not warehouse things.
Good job. Uh, I just, playoff to that, you know? I think one thing the board should be doing, the Finance Committee should be doing, or I can back the bar to do is develop the budget. And it may well be higher than sky, it may be 5%, two more something, come up more. But develop the budget, it's the best. It includes more language programs, which clearly there is a desire for in the town. So let's figure out, without those numbers, all we end up doing is immediately working from bottom line. Let's, let's lead, let's find out what we really want in this town and what's it gonna cost? And we may not get it this year, but we can get there eventually in creative fashion or whatever it takes. But let's, let's have that wish list if that's what it is. And so I would hope that you guys are also developing that and find out, you know, here's the money falls from the sky, from Hartford or from Washington, if they need to do that.
It's a good suggestion. I think in one aspect, you can try to do other things is, uh, to try to address those issues. Right now, we don't have a grant writer. You know, there's other ways of getting money for those types of projects. Because we also have to be, you know, realistic as to the way the economy is. I mean, if the money's not there, it's just not there. But there's other ways to do it. Grant writing's a great one and that could actually easily, you know, have an entire language program because of it. So we are trying to look at different issues and different, you know, answers and think outside that box.
Steven, can you hand up your call?
Um, excuse me. I mean, I don't think 2.44 is enough. I mean, in a perfect world, just, I mean, think of the things you could do if you had unlimited funds. But there is a reality here and it's, I mean, I'm sitting here because I felt the passion that you guys are feeling. And so I think it's extremely important to listen to the public because they're your kids and it's your town and it's your school. But there is a reality that unfortunately we have to deal with. There's only so many dollars. I only make $50,000 a year, I can only spend $50,000 a year. And really, when all's said and be perfect world scenarios and everything, but at the end of the day, there's X amount of dollars we're gonna give. And what these gentlemen are trying to do on the committee, because this is the first time we've seen it, is they're trying to do the best they can do with the amount of money that's given. Now, one of the things that I would like to know is I've heard a lot of things that are very good. Class size reduction is terrific. But if we only have that, my $50,000 budget, what am I willing to get up, give up to get that class size down?
School questions?
No, I, I mean, I want the man. Well, okay, that's, that's a good one.
Others?
Again, SRBI, I think you need to really look at, crunch it up. Figure out, even if you know it's now folded into the regular day, there's, there is time, there is value to what those kids are gonna do. Find what the dollar amount on that and suddenly that becomes something that maybe apart from the budget that you have to worry about for Board of Finance. I think, I think there's, there's an interesting approach there. In the same way that you're talking about taking, you know, the increase that they can make out of it. I don't know if that applies, but it's an interesting approach. This is 10%.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
I don't have an answer to that question. You know, I, I really, I do think you guys are really looking to me because I know this is not a big, but I can also guarantee that every person sitting in this audience or everyone, every person understands the economic reality of our times and the limitations of our budgets. But the reason why we are so passionate is we are talking about fundamentals. We are not talking about adding extra levels of resources. We are not talking about, you know, improving our school buildings, which could do some improvement. We are not talking about adding a vice principal or adding anything. We are talking about meeting fundamental. And I just heard 25 kids in a class at 3.5 is not acceptable. And it's, it's nice if it pulls me out of the circle more than anyone else, but it's not...
Being the new guy on the block, exactly. Uh, we're looking at things differently.
Again, it's definitely old.
He's an old nugget. You know, we've looked at that, that first presented budget that Frank gave us. Personally, I felt a $4,000 bagger for a lawnmower was a little ridiculous at this time with the economy the way that it's... So that's why we looked at everything on, on, on that system. Buses, we have two buses out to 150,000 miles. We have Mr. Buell, who's one of the greatest guys, I gotta tell you now. I've met him, I've introduced myself, he's great. He works with down, he doesn't spend an extra nickel, he doesn't matter. We have two buses with 150,000 miles out. We should replace them. We have one that needs a 6,000 hour motor. Uh, he's kinda holding it. We have to get the kids to school. I understand what you said, you know, I'd rather keep the teachers.
Well, he gave a great presentation on Made to Get Versus New York report. And he, he does, you're right, he does an exceptional job.
And he kinda suggested we do that in two a year. I think with those two buses, I think we're gonna lose a few in the next year or two when we have to get new in. And they're very difficult. We can't just say, give me a bus, they're six months out, I could be a little strange. I mean, I just can't call up and get a bus tomorrow.
I think what we're all saying is that we appreciate what you presented and that we're just asking you then, it's not like the biggest concern is the class size with the two extra teachers and the few accommodated, the other grades that were large. And so we're asking you to present a budget, even if you have to raise it to include those teachers, not cutting the other stuff. When the Board of Finance says no, then you go back and you do what you have to do. But I think we're asking you to just stand up for it. And it's that when you come up with a plan, there's...
And I, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Uh, Steve Ruckel.
I just wanna, well, to answer your question, you know, I, it's very hard to answer your question. Because I feel like we're kind of at, we're, yeah, we're not even at a bear zone. I mean, I think that, you know, almost everybody that's, see that, that's here. I mean, we have a lot of parents and community members who go into the schools. We try to help out as much as we can, offer our time, our expertise. Um, you know, when it comes to the computer, um, you know, I'm wondering if we go with more of the community. You know, we, some of us have husbands that do, you know, networking. Maybe they could offer, I have a friend, Mr. Olson, you know, he helped me with a lot of things in middle school. You know, maybe if you go to some community, you know, we need to start thinking on that.
And I just think you could be, you could get interns from, or the Academy or you could be...
We're actually looking at that.
And it would be a great work study program for the students at KU and the Middle College that I worked with and so forth. But you can also look at alternative forms of Connecticut deregulated energy savings so that you can actually have energy options. You do not have to be in the monopoly of the U.S. You can go with North American power.
We didn't have power. We didn't, certainly power and you quite worked out the way the town said it's going to this year holding that as, but the rates across the board still aren't up.
They are, but they're, it's a competitive market, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're paying less now than we did two years ago. But it's good.
You see, harder and easier again.
Here, here. Oh, um, I know we touched on, I was gonna say, using some of the high school students for the computer problems, there were some of the tasks that they didn't handle or she not look ready.
Like, that's one of the things that Frank had brought up to us. I think two finance committees are up. We, we, uh, we have one case. Uh, one in the other four, but it's, it was one of them that, that we're investigating now. So that's why this, as I said, sausage making still isn't quite done yet, but this was the right time to get the feedback from everybody. Before the hour gets to you on, I did wanna say thank you very much to the Academy for coming first of all and also providing childcare. For those who didn't know, down in roommate, there are some Academy students and they are mentioned, uh, for providing a childcare. That was fantastic. And I do thank you guys for coming out. You'll be there, you'll be there Thursday night, 6 o'clock and you'll see Mr. Frank and Mr. Bernard and myself with you.
How good is this? Thursday night?
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that want here today because it's a long weekend and the families on way. Could we do a call, could we get for this one to let parents know there isn't a Wednesday night?
Thursday night?
Thursday night, sorry. A rubble?
Sure, I can do it.
I think that's right. If people are not able to...
What, excuse me, what, what day of the week do you want me to do it? I don't wanna do it too early or too late. What do you think?
Wednesday. Tuesday, that way they can be the babysitter.
Tuesday evening.
A day that it doesn't snow.
Don't say that. Because I'll be...
Wait a second, you're stealing, I'm gonna cost money. You cannot tell me for whatever reason, sometimes you just are a babysitter.
Absolutely.
How helpful, is it for you, it's important? We get emails from the very chair.
Three emails.
Okay. Just send it marketing and how, how does that get recognized? You know, by Board of Finance or any of that?
What we, what we typically do is depending on, one year I got 74 emails. So I just kinda run it all this and I've got 74 parents that basically said this. You know, if I wore two and then six pages long, I'll write it into the record. But they always get attached to our Board of Ed minutes. They always get attached to, so if you can get them a little further in advance, they can have a reading package and if not, they come with a day out. I check my email, like, just before the meeting to make sure that I didn't miss anything because we have in on our agenda, there is an exception. Correspondence, that's where all of that hits right in.
Yeah, I can, I can actually read my door and to go for fun, but I think for those that are there and I know those, those are basically, we can just get as many emails as we can. Send emails and then should you be CCing Board of Finance on these emails?
So if you do, right, this is, in years past, you know, when I go up to Frank's and I go up to review the presentation, I don't wanna break the gap, maybe with me. It's like, this is the feedback that you want to get now.
And I tried to respond to that ahead of time, just like I said last year with that whole letter right from the beginning that we did. It almost seemed like, oh, hello, we got this big deal. And I mean, maybe if you knew it earlier, you'd think that there are the people that support it.
Right, or right after, call it, or right after, in both places.
And then just out of curiosity, I know you don't know a lot about the new public community in California, but is it slated to affect more children then?
Do you have to do, I, I, I have just a high level guideline.
All right. Can I just say just that when there is a significant change like that as well, that the administration being more proactive and letting parents go out and put forward in terms of some rumors, I mean, the things that I hear, like, that's not true. But I think that natural order is ordered.
Yeah, we need to do a better...
Yeah. I think it was a lot of, it was serious. I think a lot of there was...
With communication, there were some slides I think didn't make it and had it. Is that something that's gonna be available, probably? Is it, you can, I put that on the...
We posted on the district website, I don't know yet. Okay, you're right, you're putting it on the district website. It won't happen until Tuesday, so I'll go look for it to speak to. Because remember, who's off on Monday for another holiday. And we are in session on Tuesday, right? Yeah, I have to work too. Right, we are in session Tuesday. Before everybody leaves, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Really impressive. It's only a week ago.
That's one of my biggest issues.
I don't talk.
Well, that's the problem.
That's what I'm saying.
It's like your personal, it's like your personal, your personal rep.
Well, groundless, it's all about who is. Some people suggest you need four, eight, or twelve, I don't know.
What do you agree with?
I say no.
That's amazing.
Very nice, very nice, I like that.